All right, calling to order the Board of Commissioners this afternoon in our work session. It's December 3rd, 2025, and the time is 3 o'clock. We have the full makeup of board here today, Commissioners Bruce, Nichols, and myself, Commissioner Minty. We have a fairly full agenda, and I'm using my discretion authority as the chair to switch around the agenda briefly. But we do need to approve meeting minutes from the last.
That's good, yes.
So I am going to take the Animal Control Brain Trust presentation first. I know we have a lot of visitors here in the room for that, so Jill and Jill, come on up additionally.
That we had an audience.
You know, this is great. Come on up.
Really what it was for?
Really? I'm gonna lay some ground.
Inquiring minds want to know.
Lay some ground rules because we do have a big room. So our, only our presenters are going to be able to speak, all the people at the table. Don't do like question and answer or anything like that. The first time you speak on the record, please incentivize yourself. We do have two additional members of the Brain Trust here, Marcio and Darlene. Marcio and Darlene, as members of the Brain Trust, you're also welcome to sit above the desk with Jill and Joe if you would like, although certainly would help. But this is, I think this one was scheduled for approximately 30 minutes. And again, the first time you speak, go ahead, please introduce yourself. And Sergeant Melissa's also heard this too, so Lieutenant Rose, so it's great that he's here. And with that, take it away, Jill and Jill.
Lieutenant Rose, you can sit up here with us, super part of the group.
And, and ask.
One of them.
Yeah, come on up. As they're hearing out, I should do a little more table setting just for the board's recollection. So we all recall during our budget process, we had a pretty significant budget change to the Animal Control Department, essentially reducing it to what they collect in fines and fees. And it was noted at the time that that was going to be a very significant change. It was going to result in a reduction of staffing. We weren't sure if the staffing was going to stay under the Sheriff's Office or move to its own department. And I had asked for the board's blessing, if you will, to form a diverse group of stakeholders and citizens and just generally smart people to form a Brain Trust to try to come up with ideas. So we spent the last five months meeting every other week and coming up with a series of recommendations for our own Animal Control Department. But because it was hard to extra strictly, our Animal Control Department from other county animal issues, i.e. people wanted to talk about the shelter or other organizations, the group did decide to sort of empower themselves to also come up with some recommendations. But of course, this board was, we don't run the animal shelter. So really, that's just as a courtesy for our friends over at the animal shelter. But our recommendations primarily here today are for county animal control and that's guaranteed.
Thank you, and my name is Jill Russell, here with Jill Wall today. Thank you guys for having us. And first of all, we really want to thank Commissioner Minty for putting this group together. It was a very great group of stakeholders in the community, and I think they came up with some really good ideas. And I just also want to put in there that I was able to get an all-star for us, because I'm related to her. But my cousin, who was the, basically the head of the Oregon Domain Society, was also a part of our group and gave us a lot of good input as well. So her name's Chris Ottoman, she's a Clameth native and always wants to help with all things Clameth County and has worked in the past with us. So just wanted to put that shout out too. So thank you guys for everyone that was on there.
Very good, Jill Wall here. Let's see, as far as, did we want to show this on the screen or is it?
Okay.
Focus H G M according to the website. Okay, I know you gave introduction.
I know, we weren't paying good attention.
So first off, I'm going to start by saying, I, I kind of come into projects and I was looking for something a little bit more revolutionary. I was hoping we could shake things up a little bit more. I think we found a number of constraints along the way, both from Oregon revised statutes, which what we are required to provide as far as animal control services. And then also recognizing just some of the constraints as far as what you bring in fees through, your licensing fees and what the staffing costs are. I think people always have expectations of many government services. And at some point, I'm just going to say, kind of working at the city as well, it's doing more with less, but then also doing less with less to a certain degree. I think a lot of what we're coming at is efficiencies. So sticking with the current system and trying to figure out how to do it in a more efficient way to free up limited staff time to take on more important matters. That's kind of a little bit of an overarching thing that we'll get into. So first off, I want to thank, we thanked a few folks. Haley in your office was also tremendously helpful in putting together some materials. So let's see. And the slide show. Do you want me to go for goals, just overarching?
Yes.
Okay, so reduce call load to focus staff resources on priority issues. I think we determined there's probably about 12 calls or service a day, some of those being repeat calls, some of those calls taking a significant amount of staff time. Approve efficiency through process, technology upgrades, modernization. We're going to talk about it a little bit more. AI was kind of a big part of that. I understand the Board of Commissioners have already started engaging, maybe have a company on board to see if either chatbot and/or kind of verbal communication for trying to free up staff time. Bolstering compliance with licensing, vaccination, and animal welfare laws. Very rough numbers, but it's like we have about 11,000 dog licenses in the county. Don't know the exact number of dogs that there are in Clameth County. I mean, let's say we have about 70,000 people. We probably have a compliance rate of maybe 40%, maybe less on the actual licensing, so that's kind of a big item. Build community engagement to share responsibility for animal welfare. A lot of this is educational, trying to incentivize people to kind of comply with and understand the benefits of animal licensing and what those dollars go towards. Just like city business licensing, it's not so much a penalizing approach, but you kind of have to try to get people to voluntarily comply. And then we'll talk a little bit about fiscal and staffing items.
Want to continue on and?
Well, let's go with this, okay. We can't solve everybody's neighbor issues. I think sometimes there needs to be an expectation about what animal control can and cannot do. And for often low-level items, there is going to be a lot of encouraging on the website to try to handle it on your call. A lot of materials are being added to the website that weren't there previously, like FAQs, guidelines, have you tried this first? Again, all with the attempt of not having county and government try to mediate common issues. We'll still get a lot of calls, but again, trying to kind of push that off as best we can. Talked about reducing call volumes, understanding that, I believe there is one, for all purposes, clerical office staff in, in Animal Control, one officer trying to split time. But as we talk about covering the entirety of Clameth County, which is that's. With my understanding is that Animal Control now is for all purposes completely self-funded through licensing, fines. It's not part of general fund, which I think needs to be explained as well, but completely self-sufficient. So some questions.
Well, and we'll kind of go into this a little bit more, but the clerical responsibilities we found are very best for the employees that you guys do have. So just really focusing on how we take some of this clerical duties away from them so that they can bring up their time to do the more pressing matters that they need to focus their time and energy on.
So just as an example, you look at the postcards that are probably sent out on an annual basis and the amount of staff time that goes into preparing and mailing them. The thought is that we could largely have AI on these systems. When you look at a lot of paper forms and the effort that goes into taking a paper form and then manually transcribing all of the information into the county system and how long that takes, right? So here's a licensing form, I'm a few favor. Here's a complaint form that's on the website, again. Working for the city, I think we always have to have both. I recognize a lot of people aren't as comfortable with technology, so you always have options, but you try to make those items online a lot more intuitive so that you're not, again, physically in taking paper checks and then manually cashiering those. As an example, a one-year altered dog license with senior citizen discount costs $12.50. I mean, I ask myself, I'm like, why are we even collecting $12.50? I'm spending more staff time processing and cashiering a $12 check than the service that's being provided there. Okay, so freeing up staff time.
Yeah, so there's a lot of reasons that we think education is the place that we need to be, especially with compliance and getting more people in compliance with their dog being licensed. I know, I didn't understand that it was only dogs that we were talking about when we went into this. I think a lot of us were really surprised by that. The cats don't have licenses, the other animals don't have licenses, so just the puppies. But to get them on, in the database so that if they go missing, which we've all been on Facebook, we've all seen all the dogs that are out there all the time that are, everyone's trying to hunt them down. If we knew who their owners were, if we could find them and that they were in a searchable database, a better way to do that, just being able to increase that compliance so we can get those dogs home is super important to all of us. One of the things that apparently we used to do in the county that we haven't done in a while are maybe do some free vaccination clinics. This is twofold, help a lot of our community members that might not be able to pay for those vaccinations. But also what that does is that automatically kicks them into the system. Because once you get a vaccine, a rabies vaccine, it kicks them over and they, it goes straight to dog licensing. So that helps us better collect those funds and revenue and identify those dogs.
When the vaccination clinics, I think we were talking about how that would be coordinated and working with local veterinarians.
Yes. And trying to do them maybe around fair time or, you know, throughout the summer. They used to have very successful programs apparently back in the day. And so that's what we are kind of taking, looking at implementing again and in a positive way to get some of that compliance up with fees so that maybe we can get additional staffing. And then the educational campaigns, basically, I don't know that we came up with that idea on this, but if we can educate the public in being at Third Thursdays or at the fair, why it's super important to license your dogs and what the, what the benefits are for doing that. I think sometimes we're all stick and no carrots and provide some carrots to the community members so that they see that if their dog goes missing, we can find them faster. Or if they're having issues with their neighbor, you know, there's a way to go about that and we need to keep our compliance officers out there. So we can't have neighbors come to a happy medium together that we have someone that can go out and talk to them. So that educational component would be a big part of what we're looking at to mostly boost compliance, but just make it seem like it's just the responsible thing to do as a donor, is that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think education campaign does a few things, kind of shares what Animal Control does and doesn't do.
Right.
Again, not maybe kind of set those expectations. I think there needs to be some differentiation between understanding what Animal Control is and what Animal Shelter is. I think there's a lot of co-mingling and community confusion about that as well. And then I think it's pretty valid that, and story maybe to be told a little bit, that licensing fees are what directly go to fund Animal Control and that without people licensing their dogs, there is no control. I feel like people get, and everybody looked at me, it was kind of funny during our course of items, because I think I was the only person in the group that doesn't own a dog. I don't know where stuff, they're only telling you, I know. But I can't share just how excited people were to volunteer for items of this nature and how I think there could be a lot of ground swell support for both Animal Control, but then largely Shelter items as well. So Jill, you had talked about some of those community events, kind of piggybacking, not necessarily having specific events for Animal Control, but for already established community events. You know, you put a boost up at a fairgrounds at whatever, you know, vaccination clinics, then you back onto something else. I don't necessarily know, we're talking about volunteer, I don't necessarily know how much that would actually work to supplement staffing for Animal Control, but I do see probably more to benefit for Shelter. I think there could be a lot more volunteers in there.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we did come up with a name for the volunteer group that we all kind of felt was appropriate, the Dog Squad. So implementing the Dog Squad and getting out there and maybe doing some neighborhood patrols. If there are some things going on that the volunteers wouldn't be the ones giving out citations or doing any of those things, but just going out and seeing if they can hear the things. So we're not sending our compliance officers out all the time. So maybe have some community partners that could help in making our community better and have better dog relations.
So I, because I, I don't want to like step on, because I don't have too much background in this field, but just observationally, I think there was a lot of comment that having a very successful shelter kind of goes hand in hand with Animal Control and that by having, you know, better pet adoption, again, loose dogs, whatever it is, it kind of almost reduces the burden on Animal Control. So the two items really tend to go there.
Well, I think too, along with the vaccination clinics, my cousin had talked a little bit about maybe doing some reduced chip clinics too, where we could get dogs chipped and make sure that they make it home that way as well. But to try to figure out how we can maybe be proactive in helping instead of reactive, whereas where we've been right now is very reactive in helping do things and how can we be more proactive? I hate that I have to have glasses now. And really, the Dog Squad, the public education initiatives, just get people out to participate in all things so that we're educating the community on why dog control is so important and why animal control is so important and why we want to make sure this is funded so that if we do have issues, I think that's a lot of help.
I did find it interesting that it's only dogs that are licensed. And then you look at the service calls, and it is primarily dog-related, but it's, I actually go out for livestock matters. So not entirely sure the funding and how that's recruited or not, but I just found it interesting that it was kind of on the backs of dogs and I don't know.
Well, I own one and he ate everything he was given.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so community events, being out at adoption drives, at educational workshops, and helping the community build responsibility, so encourage community members to build responsibility for animal welfare throughout our county. And then I went to that one there in the past.
Well, it's, we have a lot of people to watch.
Yes.
So again, we've, we've already seen some upgrades, talking to Haley, working on websites. But again, just trying to make items a little bit more intuitive. I think the first thing you notice on the website kind of speaks to some of those funding challenges, the fact that it indicates hours, what does that say?
Noon to four.
Monday through Friday. So again, if we could, I don't know if outside those areas, hours, you're doing a lot of clerical items, but to free up staff time. And then just making it an easier website. We talked about mobile, everybody wanted to do things on smartphones now. I tried to, you have to do a sign-in and a login, but making sure that licensing process is as smooth as it can be, straightforward. And then putting a lot of information on the website as far as that may use, as far as a lot of that's educational to us. So I just took a snippet off of the homepage, let's say for Animal Control, and you kind of see the setup as it stands right now.
It's not super sexy and a little tough to navigate. And then I know that Haley's been great about going and looking at new programs that they're looking at using. But one of my dogs is in the system twice. Because you went from a puppy to a grown dog and in doing that, I tried to do it myself and apparently messed up somewhere. So now Dash is in there twice. So it's been kind of a clunky system that we've been dealing with, even for those of us who really want to try.
Okay.
Our favorite.
Yeah, and this one, again, always kind of tough, but it, I don't know the share between licenses and fines. The vast majority, I think, of revenue comes in through licenses. Fines, again, being one thing, but it's really more compliance-based. You really don't want to count as fines as your sustained revenue model, you want to get people in line. But with that, we were kind of looking at the different fees as they are established today. And again, I don't know what the appetite is for increased fees. I think we always have to be careful about that because there's two ways of looking at it. If you want to have higher compliance, maybe having that lower fee rate is amenable, should more people comply. But I look at the varying discounts and 12 different boxes that you could almost check when you're signing up to license. So I mean, I'm just going to say it and. Okay, I, I mean, I ask whether or not you should have a, what's the percentage on that? So $30 for standard, whether it should be $12.50 a year for senior citizen, veteran, dog licensing. Should there be a difference between unaltered dogs and altered dogs? And I understand, this is trade-offs because you talk about community health benefits, but again, does it become too complex to have that in your license structures? Again, community health benefits with microchip, you will probably microchip your dog regardless, Jill.
But not all.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still a fee, so it's, yeah.
I mean, I would see something like a 30/20, not having a 30/20, 12/50 if I were the.
So just simplifying the fee structure a little bit and maybe, and I know that's my ruffle feathers, but maybe not having a three-year option. And we all know if we're in the process every single year and we do something all the time, that we don't forget to do it. Three years seems like a long time to remember to, even though you get your vaccines, seems like a long time to get out of the loop of the system when it's not any difference from the three years. So.
So I mean, I feel like fees the hardest conversation, but I know it's a conversation that Commissioners, of course, have to look at with some budget considerations with what's brought in, what those staffing levels are and what level of service you can provide. I think there's oftentimes an expectation of level of service, but if it can't be met with those fees, then again, serious look at some of those dollars. I personally would advocate slightly higher fees.
Yes. I'm going to talk a little bit about, because we are so excited about the opportunities that are out there for maybe the shelter. And we didn't have any oversight on this anyway, but we had a lot of conversations about what we'd love to see our shelter be. So I'll talk about that a little bit. I know there's quite a few people that really would love to volunteer. You know, my husband would not love that because I'm a dog. But helping, helping the shelter in a lot of ways, we have another slide deck on this one, I'm going to go through the whole slide deck. But helping the shelter enhance community engagement and awareness and really have the community, all of us dog lovers, be there to help them do events like open houses, pet adoption fairs, educational workshops and a lot of different things at the shelter to increase public awareness. We would love to engage with them also about strengthening, extending the volunteer programs, implementing a targeted fundraising campaign. I think we were all very excited to just lend our hands. So I think this group, the Dog Squad, really sees us moving forward as a group, kind of getting involved in that way too.
You mentioned how much fun you had at the furball these events.
Yeah. And then I think things happen, and I'm not, I don't know, we've talked about this a little bit, we hadn't had the shelter in with us, but the hours are very limited, the dogs that they have are very limited. And I know what we've been seeing is that other shelters are popping up or other facilities are popping up throughout the community, some are licensed, some are not. But why I wanted to mention that to the Commissioners is that more shelter facilities are coming and if for some reason those shelter facilities take on the role that the shelter's having right now and for some reason that shelter fails, you guys will be on the hook for all of the incarcerated animals that are in your care to take care of those animals and it would increase your fees and budget trying to house the animals that you need to house to your Animal Control, whereas now you have a, an agreement with the shelter. So we want to figure out ways that the shelter can be very successful so that you guys don't have to put on that piece of it on your own. And there are four different places here now, Clameth Animal Shelter. I'm not so sure about Shasta Dog Rescue, but they popped up on Facebook and they have a thrift store. And I think they're just doing, and I don't know if anyone else is, I think they're just doing fostering. I don't think they have a place to actually house animals, Friends with Pets, It's Kitty's, and a car rescue.
And so there's, let's see, Relief Angels.
Relief Angels, yeah.
Recently. And those are some different balances I hear from that land use planning perspective about like residential neighborhoods and inappropriate to have certain uses, but that's kind of sidebars, but seeing a lot of other shelters pop up.
Yeah. So how as a community partner and as a community member, can we be more supportive of the shelter now that this group has convened and we've had many conversations about this? How can we support them in the best way possible? And then right now on TikTok and Facebook and Reels, there are so many amazing stories that shelters are putting out there where when they adopt a dog, the whole shelter comes out and yells and screams and everyone's so happy that this dog is being adopted and they're out all the time. So how can we maybe make adoption more of a priority in our, in our town and in our county and get some of those animals out into loving homes? So how can we utilize social media? How can we utilize Marcio and AI stuff to, you know, help the shelter do a rip-roaring business and get a lot more money and funds and care for these animals so that we make sure that they can be cared for in the best possible way? And I will say that I've got a friend that's going through a lot of awful things right now and I'm not going to get into that, but has two dogs that were her ex-husband's dogs that she's been trying to figure out how to get them into the shelter or get them somewhere so that they can be adopted. And she's a school teacher and can't make the hours that are there, has tried to set appointments and it's been really, really tough for her to even get appointments to get those dogs seen. And so just how do we, how do we help that process so that someone's going through the worst crisis of their life is not also in mental anguish trying to figure out what to do with their dogs at this time in their life? So how, just how can we be helpful?
Thank you. Isn't the answer to all this funding or money, would that solve a lot of it?
So we can't really do questions from the audience, but afterward, when we all break up, all, everyone can go in the hallway and Jill will make herself available. Yeah, sorry about that. It's just, we have, we have to have protocol. But the big takeaway is if the shelter fails for any reason, you guys do have services for them. So we want to make sure that the county stays full and doesn't have to hire more people. So I think that's our turn into Animal Control and Shelter in a nutshell, am I correct?
Marcio Nunes, definitely excited about where, what this Brain Trust turned into. I think there was so many delightful conversations around how do we solve big problems? I also feel like there is a lot of community members who are excited about how they can be involved in what this looks like moving forward. But I think our biggest push was that we need to get the attention on what this looks like from our community standpoint. There's limited amount of staffing, there is a limited amount of resources. And the biggest thing for us is that we really need to figure out how we bring together more of our community towards solving a problem that feels from our perspective, a little bit hard to solve. And I do believe there's great steps moving forward. You know, as our team already mentioned, online is huge. And so if we can just take small snippets of what's happening in real life, putting on events, bringing the community together, being a part of Third Thursday, having some dogs out there and having some fun, getting out leashes. There are so many creative ways where we could bring together the community. And I think what Joe was alluding to is artificial intelligence is here to stay, whether you guys believe in that or not. It really doesn't beg to differ to change the reality. So how do we utilize these things? How do we make them more efficient and how do we make them better for our community? I think it starts with small projects like this where we can make a huge difference in a small. I think it starts with small projects like this where we can make a huge difference in a small, small little way. It's controlled, it's able to be, you know, documented, processed, built out and then expanded upon. But I think what we're trying to say, commissioners, that this is a big need and we want to be a part of the solution, but we need your help.
Presentation. Questions from the board.
So first, thank you. I don't believe it's any surprise that there's a lot of passion around the pets. So people wanting to create a better, more robust program. We definitely tried to do that over the course of the last several years. Folks may or may not be aware, there, there's no more money and so we had to dial it back. We're the funding, we have a funding problem. So there is no more money to put towards animal control. I really like the way this is going, it's like Pluto's commissioner putting together this. It feels like this organic slide to an advisory board for animal control. Just like we have had for years with the library that has done wonderful things with the library, with the museum, veterans, senior center. I mean, so many different departments that we have had citizen engaged on them through that formal process. And I think you already have the people creating some bylaws, formalizing this and then getting some assistance. Also a place where we can go to direct folks that are all these other special organizations that are there for, you know, to help animals. They would have a place to go. Obviously, this is to be done in cooperation with sheriff's office as they're deciding sheriff's office right now. So I think LT, thank you for being here, both with you and Sheriff Mitchell to make sure that that all works. But the, the expense and everything that we do is people. And so getting volunteers to help in my effort is critical if we're gonna do anything about this.
That's the thoughts and comments. I, I was the only one on the budget committee that was to hold out and didn't want to reduce funding to animal control. And in the almost years since that, nine months since that, I think that a good thing did come out of it and it did drive some reforms and it brought people to the table. And, and we had some new ideas and new ways forward. And without that, yes, cut is a motivator, I don't know if that would have happened or not. So I, I agree with my colleague that funding is an issue. And as far as the shelter side of it goes, the, the community has to step up too. If this is going to be, and I understand what you say, that we're gonna have to pay more for boarding these animals if that fails. But we simply don't have it. Members of the community, if we want to keep it going, will donate time, will donate monetarily. I donated almost $2,000 of food myself last month to children specifically because we need to keep it going. And I'm not saying everybody needs to do that, but if you want to keep it going, encourage your neighbors, encourage your friends, encourage people to continue to go. And, and I think it's important to highlight something I think Joe brought up. On the animal control side, this is so much more than just dogs. We have a large county, 6,000 square miles and a lot of producers and other things happen out there with regards to livestock, chickens, cows. All of that, that, that is rolled into this. That is a huge piece for the sheriff's office to handle. And, and I encourage my colleagues and all of us as we go forward to keep that in our heads when we make these budgetary decisions on our next cycle. And, and thank you, because it did drive.
Did you both get the actual list of recommendations? So because the list is pretty extensive, I, and we do only have two staff there now. I suggest to the board, at least for consideration, we don't have this decision today, that we consider whether we get them some implementation assistance, whether it's hiring someone specifically to help drive the implementation project. Whether it's temp consultants, something, but it's gonna be pretty hard for them when they're already drowning to also then fork on implementation. But I don't want these recommendations to get lost because they're, they're real good. But they, you know, somebody has to have the bandwidth to implement them. So I asked the board to at least take that under advisement. Okay, anything else to me or anything else?
No, and I just want to thank, I, I was just the technical advisor. If you guys had any questions, you guys were doing all the, all the lit organs and I appreciate it.
He was our expert and we so appreciated that he attended. So as we wrap this up just for, because there were a lot of people here, if you would like the slide deck, the recommendations, any of that, just leave your email address with Haley out there and we can get an email to you. We can also make sure you're on an email list if we have any future meetings that have these same topics. And when you're with the shelter, we can get you some listening recommendations that came from the shelter. But yeah, just leave contact information and we still have a few other items on our meeting that may or may not be of interest. We, we won't be offended if people leave, but I'm gonna wrap this discussion up and thank you.
Thank you.
And you said we could use the other room if people have questions.
Oh, yes, please. Other room or in the hallway, whatever you want, but these folks really were end our noon as well. We're expert level. Yeah, they need the dog squad because they all want to help.
You, that's fantastic. How are you doing? Were you cleared up a little?
Sorry, I moved things around. Oh, no, that's okay. I was running. Okay.
We can use a 30 seconds.
Well, that's true. You might not leave just another like two minutes. These hards are pretty easy.
So first, I'm gonna make a motion to approve rehiring Erin Hart, who is Community Corrections Director effective December 1, upon his retirement.
We have a motion for our consideration on the rehire of our Community Corrections Director. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, sit in the bio.
I'll make a motion to approve the exception to policy to allow perpetual donations in the juvenile department for an employee who was.
We have a motion on the overall consideration. Do we have to make a question for the exception? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
You hit a home run. Again.
Oh, there you go.
It's a Millie Oxford, Executive Director of Discover Flamingo, of my quarterly presentation, starting out with the Travel Southern Oregon Industry Update. Gives an overview of what trends we are seeing through October throughout Southern Oregon. So Southern Oregon is down in occupancy for month of October, it was down 1.8%, but Klamath County was actually the highest in occupancy at 68%. So we're up 1.8%, which is fantastic. Short term rental across the board is up only very minorly at 0.9%, which we see those trends follow with our county as well. Air travel continues to be strong through the Rogue Valley International Airport. The total passengers here today is up 7.5%. Declaimance is at 5% and claimance is up 5.8% and total passengers up 54%. So we're still seeing the Rogue Valley International Airport providing strong numbers for us across the board. Similarly with Eugene, we like to keep track of that as we know we get a few travelers who fly into the Eugene Airport and come down through that way. It's declaimance up 2% and claimance up 3%. Total passengers is up 1.4% for the year. So seeing strong air travel for our region.
Well, did we see anything on Redmond Airport first?
But we can pull those statistics, I just have to get everything, like travel conflict instead of through Travel Southern Oregon or Travel Oregon, but we don't see. Oh, sorry. No, I don't, we don't pull that, but Visit Central Oregon can pull that data for us. So way it works from a top downs perspective with Travel Oregon being our, you know, mothership and then the regional DMOs, we would have to get that from the Central Oregon, regional DMO, but they can provide that if that's of interest. But we don't see a ton of folks that fly into, like, at least not from word of mouth, but they're coming through and telling us. But it's something we can definitely track to see how they're.
I just heard a lot of people saying, oh, yeah, I quickly know what it is. Had a few people talking about it, so they.
I'd have to check on that because I know like Portland and the, they're both down in air travel right now, they're still safe. But it's harder to track with them because they get so much more international travel and that's still the same. That we're dealing with tourism standpoint, but I can ask the Central Oregon Office to see if they should. Yeah, I would definitely be interested to know. This just gives an overview too, as you can see that favorite gem, Blomley Valley and Portland are both down in travel overall, both in occupancy, ADR, air travel. Where the rest of the state is still hold strong. So Southern Oregon through October was up that 2.7% occupancy and up. So we're still seeing strong travel for our region, which is big. This shows the comparison over the different counties in Southern Oregon. So Klamath County is up, which is great to see on the occupancy sample rate, 62.3% versus last year at 59.1%. Jackson County does have the highest occupancy rate and we're second behind them. It was interesting because if you look month by month in September, we were higher than them, so it's kind of fluctuating. And then we are up through ADR through the year as well, so I have $120 today rate. This just shows that in broader terms for just the month of October where we were sitting, you know, with $4.19 revenue for the month of October for sell performance, which is fantastic to see. ADR was at 116, excuse me, and then the occupancy was up that 67%. This shows the short term rental performance. Similarly, we were up in occupancy at 57.1%. The ADR is always going to be higher in short term rentals just because of the number of rooms people stay with that house, which is a good room. So they were up $80 ADR and revenue was at 705,000 short term rentals. Way to pull up from a month sample just to give you a taste of what we're seeing right now as we look into it. Just a quick few updates, if you all know, we were awarded these two grants that we're implementing. So we'll have data by already and people to utilize for county use and those grant authorities as well. So if there's anyone who thinks you benefit from these projects, data buys the platform I'm most excited about where you can geo-target specific areas and data, you can look at how people move through the market as well. So, you know, we pulled a sampling from, for today and you can see where the most by places that they visit after that event. So you can get really granular with the data and start targeting advertising to see how they're pushing out. Use it for a number of other things, it could be climate that helps if they could use the data for mountain biking association that we're trying to be a part of. So we get the point spent value in the ballpark and really does help search to accommodate those facilities. So it'll be a great tool for us to make some data decisions moving forward. Similarly with the event impact calculator, this is a calculator through destinations international, it's the industry standard event impact calculator. So if an event occurs in town, you can plug that data in to this calculator and it spits back out an industry standard economic impact number. That maybe has like some teeth to what we're saying. It's still, you know, the approximate number, they can't guarantee the state that the data is per se. But it's that industry standard which gives us like our hat to hang on. So we are more confident in those numbers that we're putting out in terms of our line of investment events. Or, you know, if we get asked to sport things, we can really look and see what makes the most sense from that economic impact standpoint and the rates to tourism. Just wanted to give a few updates on some things our teams are working on. I had a chance to speak on a women's sports tourism panel in Columbus at the Teams conference in October. This conference is for the US governing bodies for sports. So, you know, USA Xing was there, USA Track and Field, USA Triathlon, any for sporting events, right? Tolder was there, so it's a great opportunity to use, but I have not displayed. Had an opportunity with Tempe, Gallup runs the King Falls Association Series and then the Teams liaison as well. So really excited about that, just continuing to put the word out about climate. We have some really productive conversations coming from this conference, which I'm excited to share more about as things further progress. Through some pictures, just you could see some other things we've been working on. We did have a chance to have Travel Southern Oregon come down to do a strategic planning session basically to share the work that they've been doing. So we can get an overview of where they're spending their dollars, what's happening from a tourism economy and how things are moving forward to 2026. Similarly, we hosted Southern Oregon University running Y and they did an accessible tourism training, really making sure we're up to, up to standard for all things accessible tourism, accessible travel, especially with our county being build a world tour to write. So continue to put that training opportunities out for hoteliers and resellers as well. And then Rosa and I had an opportunity to present at Oregon Tax Preview Day as well to welcome new families and students, get an overview of what they expect from here. Just a few other things to be aware of, we have an intern with Klamath High School, so we're piloting an internship program. So we have a fellow on the home, she's been fantastic, we're working with them in science to really focus on workforce based learning and hospitality and tourism. Is it, you know, a major employer in our area, so creating opportunities for students to see that there's a path forward in this field. So really excited to help create that framework as they continue to expand their internship program at that school. We have Nike come through our community, you know, she just sent me back their economic impact numbers and we were able to help her with some things. It was $183,000 of estimate. So excited to work with them and hopefully welcome them back here next year. We had some of our staff attend the Chamber of Commerce Leadership and Business Day. We had the opportunity to attend conversations, treat high level tables together. We've actually talked with them about doing our strategic plan as well. So we're in conversations to see if there's similarities or similarities between our plan and what healthy climate is doing. Just more that we can align on our initiatives that are more successful and think a strategic plan of action will be for us. We're working with the Cascade that's on hockey tournament, it'll be a new event out at the running Y this March that we're excited about. And then just another piece of progress is still happening, we're really involved with the work that they're doing out there and push them, push them forward if they can be expanded or sometimes hurts. This is a quick bit on our social media, you know, we're up in engagements at the engagement rate, we're slightly down in impressions, but with the new marketing director coming on board. Oh, you have a chance to meet Hunter Roy, who's been fantastic, but there was a small dip when he was leaving, when Neo was leaving, he was transitioning off. But we're really excited about the direction that things are going with our, with our social efforts. He's got a fantastic background in photography and videography. If anyone has any projects that you know that need to be highlighted in our community, so we're happy to help. And then just a few quick updates on our board to see if you're aware, we are looking for a new treasurer. So our board is aware of this, we have to have nominations back to us by December 18th. So Dan will roll off as Travis Treasurer, Rajan, Sean Patel are both expiring their terms on our board. And then Curtis has resigned to the division. So we have some positions open, we don't have to fill them, we still meet our minimum requirement, whether we fill those or not, if they are open. Any questions for me?
Yeah. Yeah. I just, I like the diversity in the things that you're getting involved in and yet I also need to consistently catch your eye on sports tourism as we follow. You know, like that's a really great area of opportunity. So just want to compliment you for both sort of thinking big and broad, but also staying focused, which is a tough balance and you've done a great job of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, this year, a lot of it's about creating those operational guidelines and procedures and really establishing our student event goals and initiatives. And we're looking forward to have Sarah, we want to do in the business that we drive.
Thank you.
Anything else for Diko? Thank you, Seldick. We just have one more.
So, yeah, Lost River High School football, if the board is aware, we have state champions. We were figures on the state championship over the weekend. So historically for state championships, you've got a banner and a.
And a proclamation and inviting the team himself. Just wanted to bring it to the board, make sure we get that started and. I have some language already wrapped up for proclamation. Let me get that. How do we typically go about it?
We have one.
So.
Right?
No.
Do we have to get a new one?
Yeah, so process has been Haley orders the banner, uh, to pay for from the commissioners. Uh, and then maintenance hangs it up outside the building here on, on the facade. Uh, after it's been up there for a month, it comes down, the three of us sign it and then we deliver it to the school district for them to hang up in their gymnasium or however they wish to do it. So, um. All those things are kind of there.
Yeah, we had, uh, didn't we end up doing a couple of questions?
Yeah. So we had two different championships. It was really fantastic. So I can, uh. Go for it. Get that going. Just wanted to make sure that I think the board is posting. Absolutely.
All right. So if there's anything else to do, if there's a order, we'll step into your.
I see that.